6:07 PM. We have a quorum, and this meeting has been duly posted. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Dallas Independent School District Board of Trustees. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. Please join us in standing for a moment of silence, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Board members present, starting on your left and my right, are trustee Joyce Foreman, trustee and board secretary Dan Mitchkey, trustee and first vice president Lou Blackburn, trustee Nancy Bingham, trustee Bernadette Nuttall, trustee Eric Cowan, and trustee Mike Morath. Not present at the moment is trustee and second vice president Elizabeth Jones, for good reason. She has been accepted in the year-long Leadership Texas Association of School Boards program and will be a member of the Leadership Tasby class of 2015. This program is a competitive program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards, and it's a board development program designed to take experienced board members to a new level of service and leadership by exposing them to a variety of issues, people, activities, and locations during the year-long program. She will be the first trustee in more than 10 years from Dallas ISD to participate in the Texas School Board Leadership Program, and the third participant from Dallas ISD in the program's 22-year history. Dallas ISD alumni include our very own Dr. Lou Blackburn, class of 2004, and former trustee Ken Zorn, class of 2002. With the completion of the program, trustee Jones will earn the designation of master trustee. So congratulations to trustee Jones. Our superintendent of schools is Mike Miles. He joins us, and I am Miguel Solis, board president. Si alguien necesita los servicios de un intérprete para escuchar la junta en español, por favor levante la mano. Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to recognize any public officials who may be in the audience, or any elected officials in the audience. Do you see any trustees?
Oh, Honorable Diana Ragsel.
The honorable Diane Ragsel has joined us today. Thank you for being here. Thank you, ma'am. And we have some accolades as well. Are these the accolades?
No, those are recognitions.
Okay, let's see. Do we have any accolades?
No, no.
We don't have any accolades. Well, that's unfortunate.
We have recognitions only.
But we do have recognitions. That's great. So it's now time in our program where we recognize those students and staff who've made outstanding achievements and/or earned significant honors, and those individuals in the community who have made important contributions to Dallas Independent School District. Do we have any recognitions?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening. Trustee Nuttall, superintendent Miles, and principal Hera Wright, please come forward. The board is honored to present a certificate of recognition to Ms. Margie Robinson. Ms. Robinson, please come forward. Margie Robinson, teacher at Skyline High School, was awarded the 2014 Outstanding Teaching of the Humanities Award. Ms. Robinson will receive a $5,000 prize with an additional $500 for Skyline High School to purchase instructional materials. Humanities Texas presents these awards annually to Texas social studies and language arts teachers who have made exemplary contributions in teaching, curriculum development, and extracurricular programming. Over 500 teachers were nominated. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson. Trustee Nuttall, superintendent Miles, and principal Hera Wright, please remain standing. The board is honored to present a certificate of recognition to Mr. Emmanuel Malena. Mr. Malena, please come forward. Emmanuel Malena, teacher at Skyline High School, was awarded the 2014 Service Above Self Teacher of the Year Award presented by the Rotary Club of Dallas. This is the Rotary's highest honor, recognizing up to 150 Rotarians each year who demonstrate their commitment to helping others by volunteering their time and talents. This concludes our recognitions.
Thank you all very much, and thank you, and congratulations to those that were just honored. We appreciate your service. This segment now is for speakers who wish to address agenda items. Speakers are reminded that they are to address the board and not to address individual trustees. Ms. Gully, will you please call the speakers' names?
Yes. The Dallas ISD Board of Trustees welcomes citizens, visitors, and employees to this meeting. In order for the board to hold this meeting in an effective and orderly fashion, we ask the public to please abide by the rules outlined in Board Policy BED Local pertaining to public participation. Any person making personal, rude, disrespectful, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes worstous while addressing the board, shall be removed from the room by the police and security officers, if so directed by the presiding officer, without additional warning. I would like to remind each speaker that you have three minutes to speak. When you arrive at the microphone, please state your name and address. Our first speaker is Rena Hone, followed by Kristin Yasdanpana.
President Solis, trustees, and superintendent Miles, I'm Rena Hone, president of Alliance AFT. My address is 3122 West Jefferson Boulevard in District 7. I'm speaking to Agenda Item 7A5, Consider and Take Possible Action to Approve the Amendment to Board Policy DGB Local: Employee Rights and Privileges, Personnel Management Relations. This policy serves as a connection between the employees of the district and the administration, both at the campus level and at the administrative level. It's been a bridge for district workers in many areas like respect, voice, trust, collaboration, professionalism, and sheer decency for individuals as human beings. When changes in the regulation for Policy DGB Local came about during last school year, confusion and lack of understanding was rampant throughout the district. Employees in Dallas ISD are grateful that the trustees recognized their need for access and communication with professional organizations by including this policy in tonight's agenda. More than ever, with so many questions and concerns about changes they're experiencing, the time is now to restore the effective practices outlined in Policy DGB Local that had been a part of this district for many years. I encourage the trustees to approve the proposed language put forth in this policy tonight. The employees are looking for you to do the right thing on their behalf. Thank you for recognizing their needs and taking positive action. Your time and service are greatly appreciated by all of us. Thank you.
Kristin Yasdanpana. Our last speaker is Chris Tullis.
Good evening, board. My name is Chris Tullis. I'm speaking on behalf of the National Education Association in Dallas. I will be briefed tonight. I'm speaking to the expenditures you're about to approve, I'm sure you're going to approve over expanding our networks and Wi-Fi capacity for our schools. You've built a wonderful network. I admire that, I really do. But we're doing a bad job of getting that technology into the hands of our students, and I hope that you consider putting some brain trust together, figure how we're going to get this, and differentiate our instruction with using this capacity. I'm a teacher at Sam Tasby Middle School. I have a very diverse student body. I teach the lowest of the students in my school, and I teach the highest students in my school, and I need this ability to diversify on the fly, to push assignments, to run probably three, or four, or five classrooms in my class at the same time using this digital technology. We need to get this in the hands of our students. We built it for our students, so please figure out how you're going to do it, and do it soon because we need it. The second thing I was going to speak on was with regard to building components within the, I was going to say Skynet, all of a sudden I said it's from the Terminator, the SchoolNet, 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 I'm so tired, I apologize, is that you're adding a new component to it for the TEI, and I can understand all you're doing, and go forth. But there's many components that are still broken in that, for instance disaggregation of data, things like that, because I'm a very data-driven teacher. I need this information. For instance, Ediforia last year had a great ability to disaggregate data. This new SchoolNet does not. It's very superficial. We can't bore down into it that we need to define these patterns of discrepancies. So with all this technology expenditures, consider maybe throwing a little bit that way tonight, or even in the future soon, because as a teacher, we need this, and we need it pretty quickly. Thank you very much.
This concludes our speakers.
Thank you all. Trustees, if there are no objections, I'd like to move the rest of the speakers up so that we can get them the opportunity to speak at a decent hour. Are there any objections, trustees? Hearing none. Ms. Gully, please call the next speakers up as well.
Okay. John Proctor, followed by William Hopkins.
Good afternoon. My name is John Proctor, and I'm the new upcoming chair for the Black Contractors Association. And for the last three months, I've been doing a poll over our memberships to understand how we're working with DISD. It's not well. I'm here to speak about the lack of opportunity for African-American contractors within DISD. I got a pass out, y'all should have it on your desk by now, spreadsheet I created is based on a total of numbers for the district MBEWBE utilization for the bond program construction. I've also included slides from the district's own presentation on construction and professional service. My spreadsheet is based on numbers for the last four quarters for the bond construction. As you can see, African-American contract on less than 10% of the construction portion of the 2008 bond package. Some of our members have not received any work in over two years. We would like to know what the issues are involved with respect of why African-American cannot get a fair share of contracted within the district. I've already spoken to Larry Zerber, but I still need clarification in this situation. We are more than qualified. We want to formally meet with decision-makers to clarify any issues that they may have with using African-American contractors that we already approved for work. I'd like to say this, and we're here to ask you to allow us to help you increase your numbers. Your numbers are very dismal, and we got contractors out there willing to work, want to work, and jumped all the loops with you already, but we find that they're either getting disqualified for unknown reasons, or they've been held off and not put in line to do work. Now, that's inappropriate. I am the upcoming chair of a membership, we're doing a briefing right now on digging down deep in your numbers, and your numbers don't look good to us. So we want to ask you to allow us to help you. Thank you very much.
William Hopkins, followed by Robert Cechorelli.
Could I get that, Mr. Miles, could I get that passed out to the board members before I speak? How do y'all do that? How would I know, how would I know that you got this information?
We will get this information at the end of the meeting. We'll have all the information in front of us, sir.
I'm talking, how would I know that you got this information? How would I know that? You can, how would I know if you couldn't tell the FBI, well, I didn't see that, I didn't see the court order that William brought? How do I know? Can you extend that rule? Can I see them, give at least one of y'all one piece of paper? You can do that?
No, sir, but we'll get the information, and your time is going to begin to speak. So thank you.
Reason I want you to have that, President and Superintendent, is it's a court order I already gave y'all, where the city and the state sued the RSR lead smelter for the contamination with, for the children and the adults and the parents in West Dallas. They dying in West Dallas. I've been coming down here 15 years, I don't know if the city of Dallas and the state of Texas and the Dallas DISD is getting paid to let the children die in West Dallas, but the city wrote me a letter in 1997, the first letter that y'all gonna receive. The city said that they didn't have nothing to do with the lead lawsuit with the RSR lead company in West Dallas. They was telling the people that they didn't have nothing to do with it, they weren't involved. That's the first letter. The second letter is where the city and the state sued. They was lying to the people, telling the people they didn't have nothing to do with it. The city and the state sued, that's the, this is a court order. This is 1981. Since 1981, the federal courts has explained what to do for the people that's dying in West Dallas, health program for the children and for the people in the school and the DISD, move the white people out of the DHA Houston Authority due to this court order. They moved the Hispanics, Mr. Miles, out of West Dallas, DHA Houston Authorities due to this court order. They left the black children over there, Mr. Miles, to die from the lead contamination, arsenic, cadmium in West Dallas. And I've been coming down here, I've been going to the city of Dallas, I went to the city yesterday, they letting the people die, nobody say nothing, Tenell Atkins, none of the blacks on the DISD, no black at the county. It was a law firm. The city got the money for the people. I'm gonna tell you what happened. They sued and got the money in 1981. In 1985, they gave Fred Byron and Bud and Lisa Blue, Dorothy Bud, and Russell Bud some money to give to the people in West Dallas, Mr. Miles, you know, this little portion of the money. And they had them to go to the boys' club, and don't tell the federal government, because I guess they didn't want to pay taxes on the money, this Fred Byron and Bud law firm. And everybody was going to be quiet. The city, the school board wasn't going to say nothing, they just moved the white people, and I don't know if y'all got to keep the money that the DISD got with the lawsuit, or Fred Byron and Bud is paying the county and the DISD and the city not to say nothing. So I'm trying to find out, Mr. Miles, why is it that you moved, they moved the white children and Hispanic children out to DHA, and why nobody won't say nothing about them black children that's dying right now, suffering? They're not learning, because the lead won't let them learn, and y'all taking them to jail.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Your time has expired.
Mr. Miles, can somebody vote for me one minute for the black children that's dying in West Dallas? Mr. Miles?
Robert Cechorelli, followed by George Ranhel.
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you. And we'll get the information at the end.
Robert Cechorelli.
And that's all? And that's all in?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, no, thank you, no thank you to you, though. Appreciate it.
How you doing? Robert Cechorelli, I hope everyone's having a good evening. First, I want to talk about one, Joyce Foreman was...
Mr. Cechorelli, I'm going to ask that you address the board as a whole and not a single trustee.
Okay, I understand. Well, what happened was, I really believe the school board is totally dysfunctional. When I saw four or five board members did not say anything about Joyce Foreman when she was pledging in, even Mike Miles said something. What I'm trying to tell you is, it shows definite dislike of a school board member, and if you don't get your act together, home rule will rule, because the people are fed up a DISD and a bickering, and when I saw four school board members, maybe five, did not say anything to the school board member that was being sworn in, that's a rude awakening, and you better get your act together, okay? Second one, pre-K. I'm talking to directly about a person in Harrison, Colorado. He was there six years. I've been studying on it, he never mentioned anything about pre-K in his district. In the six years he was superintendent, and in the first year as superintendent, he never mentioned it all at any open-mic meeting until commit was involved in it, in Obama. So what I'm trying to say to you is, even in Destination 2020, I was looking at it today, nothing about pre-K. This person somehow gets a lot of great publicity, but he has nothing to do with it, nothing. So I'm just saying, this person lives on nine lies, but he has nothing to do with pre-K at all. Third thing I want to say is about student discipline. Miguel, I'm directness to you, we talked about this at Addison High School. You agree with me that Mike Miles never brings it up? And you told me, sir, you were going to, that was a good question, that Mike Miles, why he never brings it up? And I've asked him several times, he never does. Sir, the teachers say this is number one problem. Mitchkey and Nuttall, bring it up also.
Mr. Cechorelli, for the second time, I'm going to tell you, address the board as a whole, sir. Thank you.
Well, the school board is missing a point directly about this, and why you are forgetting about the teachers, number one problem is beyond my comprehension. And it's a darn shame that you don't do this, because without this, students will not learn, teachers cannot teach. Without this, it's going to be a big failure in DISD, and your superintendent is on a mission to forget about this and just make sure that teachers are suffering completely. You said that, Mr. Solis. Also, teacher evaluations. I asked Mr. Miles again about in Harrison, about the teacher evaluations, how they're doing. He completely ignores it. I asked him during Addison High School, during Destination 2020, he said it wasn't a good time to bring it up. Why would you support something that in Harrison County, you can find out if it works or not? Nobody knows about it. Rudy Bush doesn't know.
Thank you, Mr. Cechorelli. Your time has expired.
Please do your job, okay? Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is George Ranhel. This concludes our speakers.
Thank you all to our speakers. We will now begin this evening with the... Has he signed up to speak? Okay.
Oh, I called his name earlier.
All right. Sure, go ahead.
Let me see. I gotta get the speaker. I apologize for being late. My name is Christian Yasdanpana. I am coming as a private citizen. First off, I want to thank you. You have some handouts in front of you. In my role as the Director of Special Projects at Commit, one of my projects I'm working on right now is the College Football Playoffs inaugural extra yard for teacher initiative. And so, one of the things around that program that we're doing is to implement college banners on campuses, elementary school as well as middle and high school. I'm here to thank DISD. Two reasons. One, for voting on this and actually having the ability to receive these banners. I know that any donation over a certain amount is, has to get approved by the board, so thank you for hopefully approving that today. The total donation that is going to be made is $94,000 in college banners, which will go to 154 schools, receiving 6,590 banners, which will impact 98,673 students in over 7,000 classrooms. I'm here to thank also Crystal Rents, specifically in Dallas ISD, because she worked with me diligently to ensure that every single elementary school campus received banners, because it was a very simple application process. And she would call me multiple times during the week. She said, "Christian, give me an update. How many more schools do we need to make sure to apply?" I almost got heartburn just worrying about whether or not we were going to be able to get everyone. Not only were we able to get all of the elementary schools, and Commit, as well as the Todd and Abby Williams Foundation have actually already funded numerous college, or I'm sorry, college banners on campuses, because we found this to be an effective way to get messaging to elementary students to start creating the aspiration of going to college. We've been receiving numerous, numerous testimonials, just in a few schools that have received them, of the dramatic impact that it's changing on their campuses. Teachers are stopping in the hallways with students and discussing what their inspiration is about going to college. To me, this is the right direction. This is when DISD shines, because we sent out communication to so many other school districts, and DISC was one of the very few to work directly with me to ensure that every single one did it. Not only that, a couple weeks back, we got Tim Brown, former Heisman Trophy winner, to go back to his elementary school for the first time in decades to celebrate and to inspire those students. Moving forward, we'll be working to do a specific program around college visits, and we're excited to work with DISD, as well as other school districts, in partnership to continue to get every kid prepared to aspire and to complete college. I sincerely appreciate Crystal Rents, as well as Carmen Darville, who's one of our advisory committee members, and I love whenever College Football Playoffs, the inaugural year, they come in and they say, "Commit, we're not sure what to do with this money. Help us figure out what to do," and we look at the maximum impact we can have. And I'd say 98,673 students impacted, not a bad deal.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you again to all of our speakers. We're going to begin this evening with a superintendent of schools report. Mr. Miles, please begin your report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just a few quick remarks. Teacher Excellence Initiative, our new teacher evaluation system, started this year and is going well. We have principals already moving forward on their instructional feedback. Teachers have all but completed their SLOs. Those are the student learning objectives, the goals for the beginning of the year. We had a rigorous certification process for all of our principals and APs. Rigorous because not everybody passed on the first time, but I can tell you, we're happy that all of the principals have passed their certification, and so they are qualified to evaluate teachers under the Teacher Excellence Initiative. This was something that teachers asked for, and so we feel good about how that process moved forward. Also, in the last three weeks, September 9th, and then also Monday and Tuesday this week, we reviewed, Dr. Smithko and I and the assistant supes and EDs reviewed reports from every IR campus, and principals gave us a report on why they were IR. IR means improvement required, and so under the state accountability system, they need improvement. So they came in and briefed us on why they're an IR school, what they're going to do about it, and then what supports they need from the district. And the reports are very focused. We started way early in the year, having gotten the accountability ratings early. So we're able to provide extra support for those IR campuses quickly. Matched with the IR briefings, we had this week leveling going on, which means that we look at the schools where there's too many students came or too few students got enrolled. Not a lot of movement across the district, but some. We tied leveling also to the need of the campuses, so if there was a need for an extra AP or counselor, we consider that, both during the IR process and the leveling process. What that means is, we're going to be adding some staff members to schools just because we think it will benefit those campuses, especially the ones that are struggling. Finally, a couple other things. September 15th, we had the best day ever of instruction. And yes, there were SpongeBob videos floating around on the blog, but that's okay. What the best day ever was for the Dallas community was that we had every single teacher observed that day, and we tried to make it a good, strong day of instruction. We knew that not every teacher would be proficient. What we wanted to see, though, was their best effort, the effort around engaging kids, their best effort around delivering high-quality instruction. And I got to tell you that the overwhelming majority of schools did a great job, and we did a quick pass-fail kind of statistic, and we can say that we're about 70% strong. So we're not proficient yet across the district, and that's okay. We knew we wouldn't be, because we've raised the bar in proficiency, but I'm proud of our schools, proud of the fact that all the teachers really prepared hard, and we are moving in the right direction with regard to one of our key focal points, and that is focus on the quality of instruction. And finally, we also rolled out last week a new communications tool called the Hub. If you have not been on the Hub, which is our online newsroom, it has news stories, it has news events like the one today, similar to what you would find on TV news. it has news events like the one today, similar to what you would find on TV news, very good positive stories about Dallas, but also some very strong informational stories about our Dallas efforts and your Dallas community. And so, I would encourage you to go to the Hub. You can find it on our website. It's called the Hub. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. We are now on to individual board trustee district reports. We'll start with trustee Marath. Trustee Cowan. Trustee Nuttall.
Good afternoon. I once again want to honor the two teachers at Skyline and the principal. I see Mr. Harold Wright is still here. Margie Robinson, the teacher at Skyline, was awarded, once again, the 2014 Outstanding Teaching of Humanities Award. She receives $5,000, which additional 500 for Skyline High School to purchase instructional materials. Take note, over 500 teachers were nominated, and she was one of them that won. Also, Emmanuel, which is a geometry teacher at Skyline, he received the highest award from the Rotary Club, recognized 150 each year. So, I would like to congratulate two of our top performing teachers at Skyline. All of them are top performing, but Skyline is in District 9. Also, I would like to announce, on the 7th of October, we're having National Night Out at Edna Row Elementary School. So, if you're in the neighborhood, come and join Edna Row for National Night Out with Buckner Terrace Homeowners Association. And then, I'm going on a Listen and Learn tour with our students, and the first one's going to be at Comstock the next Tuesday, and then at Skyline. So, you're all welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nuttall. Trustee Bingham.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Sigaville Walmart in Sigaville, Texas. They gave very generous gift certificates to all of the schools in the Sigaville cluster. And I'm now getting pictures of the principals standing out in front of their marquees with "Thank You Walmart" on it, which is really nice. I also, I had a really good time at the best day ever that Superintendent Miles was talking about. I went around to about six schools, and it didn't dawn on me that it was the best day ever until every classroom I went in, they were talking about the number six. And I'm like, wow, what is it with six? But anyway, it was the grade level, and it was the curriculum. And Smithko, you'd be really glad because that day, everybody was on target. But it was a fun day.
Thank you, trustee Bingham. Trustee Blackburn. Trustee Mitch Key.
Yes, I see that Principal Wright is still out there, and I wanted to also mention that I had the privilege with trustee Nuttall to be over at Skyline on Tuesday night, where four lifetime PTSA awards were given to community members. It's a great group over there, a great core of parents and community members who are very involved. I also like to repeat something that I did not realize before, but that the Skyline feeder pattern was one of the feeder patterns, I think perhaps the only feeder pattern, that didn't have any IR schools. So, congratulations. And then, I guess I'll just give you the tagline that Principal Wright used about four times in delivering his remarks, reminding everybody that Skyline is the first magnet school and the 12th largest high school in the nation. Thank you, and congratulations. Bye.
Thank you, trustee Mitch Key. Trustee Foreman.
I'm still learning. Do you have special moments? I'm still learning, and I had an opportunity to attend at the T W Brown Middle School a new ISS in-school suspension class, which I was extremely impressed with. I also went to the Zann Wesley Holmes Junior Middle School for the Meet the Teacher and the PTA, which I joined the PTA, by the way. And then, lastly, I had a wonderful time at the Oak Cliff Super Bowl football game between Carter and Kimball. So, of course, I was torn, but Kimball best Carter in that game. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. From District 8, I'd just like to say thank you to the one, the only, Mr. Tim Brown, for showing up at Mount Auburn and just engaging the students there. I know it was extremely exciting for them to be able to see what can happen if you are persistent and consistent and focused on experiencing Dallas ISD for all it's worth and making sure that you have lofty dreams and hopes and ambitions, and you work real hard to make that happen. So, thank you to Mr. Brown, to Commit. Thank you as well for setting all that up. We really appreciate your efforts. From a district standpoint, I know that the superintendent and our chief of innovation, Mr. Kaprowski, had a press conference yesterday to announce a survey that's going to be making its rounds. You can find that survey on our homepage at dallasisd.org. We want to hear your input when it comes to this idea of expanding school choice across this district. We want to hear what your thoughts are. We want to know what you want for your students and for the future of this city when it comes to the types of schools that we provide here in Dallas ISD. So, I urge each and every one of you here at the meeting, and those of you that are watching online or on TV, to please fill out that survey. And again, it can be found at dallasisd.org. Thank you all, trustees. We are now on the minutes submitted for approval. The following minutes are Board of Trustees Parliamentary Workshop, August 28, 2014, and Board Meeting, August 28, 2014. Trustees, do I have a motion?
No.
It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Dr. Blackburn. If there are no corrections, trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes eight zero.
Trustees, you have just adopted the motion thereby approving the minutes as submitted. We're now on to the consent agenda. This evening, we have consent agenda items 7A.1 through 7A.41 as amended. The following agenda items have been pulled for a separate vote. 7A.7, 7A.9, 7A.12, 7A.13, 7A.15, 7A.18, 7A.23, 7A.31, 7A.33, 7A.34, 7A.38, 7A.39, 7A.40, and 7A.41. Trustees, do I have a motion on the consent agendas as amended?
No.
It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
You've just adopted the motion thereby approving the consent agenda as amended, and now we're on to items pulled for a separate vote. Before we get into that section, trustees, if there are no objections this evening, I'd like to move that we allow each member an opportunity to speak at least one time before closing debate by the use of a motion to end debate or the previous question. Are there any objections, trustees?
A second.
Trustee Foreman.
Turn your mic on. Normally, it's each trustee speaking twice. Why are we limiting it to one time?
Trustees, if there are any objections to this specific motion?
There is.
There is an objection.
That's why I'm speaking.
Absolutely. Great. So, there's an objection to the chair's decision. That then means that we're going to have to put this up for a vote, and that vote is in the affirmative, two-thirds, if you would like to allow for, again, I'll restate the motion, each member an opportunity to speak at least once before we close debate by calling the previous question. That, again, takes a two-thirds vote in the affirmative if you support that motion. Trustees, if you support the motion?
To allow trustees at least one time.
To allow trustees at least one time.
Is that a point of order?
Yes, sir.
Or a point of clarification? Our board policy allows us to speak at least one time. I don't understand what the motion is accomplishing.
So, thank you for the question. I'll answer that. What I want to ensure is that each individual has at least one opportunity to be able to speak on the issue. The way our rules read is that each individual has at least two times. However, we also have a rule that says that if you would like to end debate, you can end that debate at any time. Within that rule, it also asks for tact, and so, what I'm attempting to do at this moment is ensure with all the numerous agenda items that we have, that each individual has an opportunity to be able to speak their mind on that specific issue.
Thank you.
That has been objected to, though, by trustee Foreman, so that will now, again, go to a vote. If you would like to uphold my ruling, that is a two-thirds vote. So, if you vote yes, you'd like to do what I'd like to do. If you vote no, then we'll go back to what the original rules are.
Trustee Miguel.
Yes, ma'am.
For clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
We want to ensure, before we call for the question, that each trustee is allowed one time to speak before we call for the question.
Absolutely.
Because in previous history.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. And all those opposed?
This passes because it's five out of eight.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much. So, trustees, moving forward, I just want to ensure that everybody realizes.
It's six out of eight.
Ms. Fay.
Yeah, so the count was six out of eight.
It should be six out of eight.
Six voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Six for two.
Voting yes was Mr. Mitch Key. Dr. Blackburn, you didn't vote. Okay.
You voted no.
You didn't.
Okay. So, that's two no's. Who else voted no?
We had two no's from Marath and Ms. Foreman. Those are the two no's.
And Dr. Blackburn?
Great. So, then that means if that motion fails, we are now back to...
We need five out of eight if they were voting, and if Dr. Blackburn was not voting, you still need five in the affirmative because it would be seven.
He did vote. That's great. He did vote. So, then the motion fails, and we're back to our original rules. Trustees?
We have five.
Yes, sir.
Five to three. It passed.
I was just going to say, five out of eight is not two thirds.
It still passed five out of eight. It's five out of eight. It passes because that is a super, as far as two thirds. The number of eight, two thirds, is five.
Five divided by eight is .625. Two thirds is .66. That fails.
Okay. Well, here's what we're going to do. This is our parliamentarian. She's giving us our rules. We've done the math. So, thank you very much. We're going to rule in that the motion fails, so we are back to our original rules as they always were. And now, we're on to items pulled for a separate vote. First item is 7A.7, to approve the budget amendments for September 25, 2014. Consent item number seven, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Trustees, do I have a motion? It's been moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Foreman.
I just have one question, if Mr. Terry would come forward. Hi, Jim. I just have one question. And that's on item number 51, plant maintenance and operations, where there was additional $2.89 million added.
$2.4 million of that is rollover from last year, in which they had ordered vehicles, and the vehicles had not arrived. So, we rolled that over.
That's my other question.
All right. Thank you so much, trustee Foreman. Are there any other pieces of discussion? Hearing none, trustees, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving the budget amendments for September 25, 2014. Next item is 7A.9, to ratify the amount of bills, claims, and accounts for July 1, 2014 to July 31, 2014. Consent item number nine, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Do I have a motion?
No.
It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nuttall. Trustees, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, trustees, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Trustees, our next item is 7A.12, to approve an increase to the contracts for commercial HVAC preventative maintenance and repair services district-wide, not to exceed an increase of $5 million, $15 million aggregate through February 2015, general operating funds, bond funds, special revenue funds. Consent item number 12, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Do I have a motion?
No.
It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several questions in regards to this particular one, and I'm trying to get an understanding. This contract was actually let on February of 2012. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And there was an increase on February of 2014 of $3 million?
That is correct.
Which brought the total to $10 million?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we actually have less than a year left on this contract because it was a three-year contract?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're asking for an additional $5 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm trying to understand how we're going to spend $5 million in seven months.
Very effectively. And let me elaborate.
Please don't do that.
Well, I think I can stand by this. We're replacing several chillers at our campuses, and we have boiler replacements, air handling units. I can provide you the backup if you need that.
Okay.
It's not hard to spend a lot of money on HVAC.
I know, but we also have QVC, the funds that we are actually replacing too.
I understand. This is a joint effort.
Okay. So, this is...
We have approximately $207 million in HVAC deficiencies.
Okay.
So, it's a concerted joint effort.
Okay. So, how much do we have on QVC dollars for...
QSCAP, or QSCB. The total amount was $143 million. I think the majority of that was for HVAC, and we have the projects that we can detail for you, that that goes to. But in the interim also, we have to make sure until the actual repairs and replacements are done under QSCB, that we keep the buildings running. So, it's a huge price tag with our outdated systems, but I can provide you the backup.
As one trustee, I am extremely concerned that we have, we're extending this contract for an additional $5 million for a matter of seven months, and that is a real concern. While we say we can spend it efficiently, I'm just concerned that we are adding this amount of money for this short period of time, and I'll be voting against this.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustees, any more discussion? Hearing none, trustees, please cast your votes.
Mr. Gapp? Oh, he's gone. Okay. The motion passes five voting yes and two voting no, and one at...
Trustees, our next item is 7A.13, to approve an increase to the contracts with Carrier Corporation and Train U.S. Incorporated for comprehensive HVAC solutions and services district-wide, not to exceed an increase of $2 million or $4 million annually, general operating funds, bond funds, special revenue funds. Consent item number 13, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Foreman.
Again, this is another HVAC contract that we are adding, which will be a total of $4 million, correct?
We're requesting $3 million added. We were granted spending authority in February 23 of $7 million, so the total aggregate is $10 million.
And this is also HVAC, correct?
These are HVAC vendors to assist us with repair activities, and it's also HVAC. That's correct.
Just trying to make sure I got it right. And when does this contract end?
Through the end of February 2015.
Again, we are, in my opinion, spending money. The contracts are going to be over in a matter of a few months, and I'm just really concerned that maybe there are some vendors that haven't been paid, or something is going on for us to continue to add this amount of money, and I am really concerned about this, and I'll be voting against this one also.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustees, any other discussion? Trustees, any other discussion? Hearing none, trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes six voting yes and one, two voting no.
Trustees, our next item is 7A.15. To authorize, negotiate, and enter into contract with various vendors for student perception survey for the Evaluation and Assessment Department, not to exceed $1 million over two years with one-year renewable option, general, special revenue funds. Consent item number 15, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Do I have a motion?
No.
It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Foreman.
I was trying to give trustee Nuttall a chance, if she wanted to go first, but I don't mind going for it first. Good evening.
Good evening.
My question about the surveys, or what grade levels are we starting with in terms of the surveys?
Starting with third grade going through 12.
Third grade through 12. My understanding is that all of the students will have some type of a survey. Is that correct?
In third grade through 12, yes.
Okay, starting at third grade. The evaluation company that we're using, have they done these kinds of surveys for students for teacher evaluation before?
Yes. Dr. Oakley, Dr. Cecilia Oakley, the director of that department.
I know her.
We have in our RFP required that they have been, they're research-based surveys. They have been used by large districts, and they have all the research background to make sure they're valid.
Okay, so you're saying that they are research-based surveys? But we won't be using a specific company? We'll be using just the survey?
We will be using a company that has the survey, and they will assist us in administering it and scoring it, etc.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Nuttall.
Every teacher in the district?
Yes.
And so, third through 12 is the total number of how many, about how many? So, every student will take a survey on every teacher?
On a student...
Or will it just be the homeroom class? Or is it your Algebra I teacher, your Algebra II? So, if you have seven classes in high school, will you take a survey and all, so how is that gonna work?
Now, we will try to have a teacher have one class survey them. So, for example, it could be that second period, we do all the surveys, so all the teachers will get that done at that time. Now, sometimes there's teachers not teaching that period, so we may have to go back and pick up another period so that that teacher will get a survey.
So, will the teacher pick which period they want?
Now, we will have to logistically work it out so that the majority are doing it on the first round, and then go back and pick up some of the others. And those are the logistics that we hope the company can help us, that have the experience in doing that.
So, and then the end goal for the survey is, so second period, it can be second period, third period, fourth period, it can be any period. Administration will decide which period. So, once you get the results, the results will be shared with the teacher and the students because surveys are taken for improvement. So, once we get the results, how are you gonna share?
The teachers will have access to a portal from the company that they can pull down their data, disaggregate it, sort it any way they want. I am not sure about the students doing that yet. That's not been in our discussion, but definitely the teachers will have access to the data.
And so, this is used for the TEI in how, I can't remember the percentage?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent of the teachers. So, the ranges for the survey, it's going to be like, if you get 50 and above, you get commended, needs improvement, and then the fif...
We did a pilot last spring with one survey to look at the data, just see how it would work out. But basically, there would be a distribution of percent positives, say. And that distribution will then be, targeted distribution will be applied to that, and the ones with the highest percent positive would get the most points, 15 points, and then it would be distributed down.
So, in dealing with academic achievement, so if a student says that teacher is terrible, so they get that 15 points taken away from the 100% scale?
Yes, but the questions are quite not like that. They're more like, I like, see, in my class, my teacher accepts nothing less than my full effort. Everybody knows what they should be doing and learning is in this class. We get helpful comments to let us know when we are doing wrong on assignments, that type of thing.
I understand that, but for example, I'm a biology teacher. You take a survey with my second grade, my second-period class, and they rate me really bad. You know, they're maybe my worst class or whatever, and they rate me really bad. So, for room for improvement, next year, so I get that rating, I get my 15%, whatever. Next year, it's a different second-grade class, so I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to help for growth with the school, with the teachers, and where is it that is gonna impact academic outcome? Because you won't have the same second-period biology class, but last semester, I got a bad rating for my second-period biology class.
It's the same as the STAR. You have your this year's data, and then next year, you have a new set of kids with new data. And we will have the data by campus, probably district data, that we will put out there that they can know what to go to. And hopefully, there might be some with the vendor that we can maybe put out information on how to...
I guess I was trying to figure out the question that's asked. How do you have growth development with a teacher with that question that they scored bad in? How do you become better in that particular question from your student? And just, I'm trying to just understand how, at the end of the day, the students, I get the students, you know, but I don't, Olivia and Lauren, they just don't get the right to evaluate me. I'm the adult, although we share and talk about things. I'm just trying to figure out how this is going to impact academic outcome and how teachers are going to grow and schools are gonna grow once that data is out there, and how we're gonna use it to help. Because our end game is, so...
Trustee Nuttall, if I could just take a stab at that?
Uh-huh.
I think another thing to remember about this whole system, and it's a system where the principal is giving the teacher some feedback as well, and then there's the student survey, etc. And so, I think that one way that teachers and principals can sort of think about whatever results they get is to look at the survey results and then also take a look at what kind of spot observation feedback that teacher has been getting, and put the ideas together so that, you know, if the students are saying, "I never get a chance to try something again," then the principal could help coach that teacher as well, saying, you know, "Here's some ways that you could do that." And yes, you're right, it's, over time, there'll be a way to look at the trends from the student survey, even though it's not the same exact students, but you can see it over time, over the first...
They're taking it in the spring or the fall?
We're thinking February, is that right? We're thinking February.
And the teachers will get their data by when?
Not sure on that, but we're hoping within the four weeks or so after it's administered.
Because the valuation is due by 10 days before, valuation's due in April, right? So, they'll have it for their formative evaluation, right?
It won't be part of that at that point, but they'll have their data. It'll be part of the overall values when they get it in September, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Nuttall. Trustees, is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion? Yes, sir. Dr. Blackburn.
On the, who's going to develop the survey questions?
The questions are, the survey's already been developed by this company that we're gonna go ahead and partner with. They've already been developed.
So, the companies developed the surveys, the survey questions?
Correct.
And they submitted that with their proposal?
They did.
And during the evaluation process, part of the evaluation was of the types of questions that they were asking, the quality of the questions they were proposing?
Could you ask that a different way?
During your evaluation process of all seven or eight vendors?
Oh.
The quality of their survey questions, was that part of your overall?
Yes, they had to provide third-party research of how, the evidence to show that it was tied to student achievement.
Okay. And approximately how many students would respond to a survey per teacher?
Classroom?
One classroom. That could have 20 students, or could have 10 students, or could have 25 students on that particular day. So, Lou Blackburn, the teacher Lou Blackburn, depending on a cool day in February, is going to have at least five points of his evaluation based upon possibly 10 students showing up on second period on that day.
You know, the minimum size hasn't been determined because we have not had contact with the vendor. Most of them will have a minimum that they have verified that they need at least, and so at that point, we will make sure there's that minimum.
So, in the teacher evaluation process, I think it's 35% that's based upon some type of student achievement. Is that correct? And there are different types of student achievements. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And five points, if I recall, is based on student survey assessments.
Fifteen.
Fifteen! Fifteen points of my evaluation might be based upon 10, 15 students, second period, on a very cool day in February.
We'll make sure it's one.
Do you guys see where I'm going with this? So, we're getting a small sample of my possibly 150 students.
But that's, we have, they have validated those numbers. They have looked at having a full, every period in a sampling, that's kind of a sampling, still validates or still is valid.
Good luck with the outcome.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, please cast your votes.
The motion passes five voting yes and two voting no.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving to authorize, negotiate, and enter into contract with various vendors for student perception survey for the Evaluation and Assessment Department, not to exceed $1 million over two years with one-year renewable option, general, special revenue funds. Yes, sir.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
I tried to vote yes, just as a confirmation.
Thank you very much. Let the record show, please. Trustees, our next item is 7A.18. To approve a one-year lease agreement with Fraser Revitalization Incorporated for the use of the gymnasium at Julius C. Fraser Elementary School located at 4600 Spring Avenue, Dallas, Texas. An approval of the waiver of Section 7 of Board Policy GKD Local to waive the fee associated with the use of the facility. Consent item number 18, pulled by administration. Trustees, do I have a motion?
Second.
It's moved by trustee Bingham and seconded by trustee Nuttall. Trustees, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes eight voting yes.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving a one-year lease agreement with Fraser Revitalization Incorporated for the use of the gymnasium at Julius C. Fraser Elementary School located at 4600 Spring Avenue, Dallas, Texas. An approval of the waiver of Section 7 of Board Policy GKD Local to waive the fee associated with the use of the facility. For those individuals that were here from Fraser Revitalization, good luck. Our next item is 7A.23. To ratify services provided by Carisoft Technology Corporation for Stakeholder, Volunteer, and Partner Management System with Hosting Services, not to exceed $225,000 over one year, general operating. Consent item number 23, pulled by Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Trustees, do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, trustees, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven voting yes and one voting no.
Trustees, you have just adopted the motion thereby approving to ratify services provided by Carisoft Technology Corporation for a Stakeholder, Volunteer, and Partner Management System with Hosting Services, not to exceed $225,000 over one year, general operating. Our next item, trustees, is 7A.31. To accept a donation from the Dallas Education Foundation for Imagine 2020 in-school tutoring, $737,000, $737,530,000 funding, gifts, and donations. Consent item number 31, pulled by trustees Bernadette Nuttall and Joyce Foreman. Trustees, do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Nuttall.
I had requested the tutoring allocations for the District 9 schools as well as the enrollment. And so, what I'm trying to understand, if this particular donation's gonna be an offset because we approved a in-tutoring contract, and then in January of 2014, we accepted $200,000 for in-school tutoring as well, when I went back to our board docs to just see, because in our January 23rd, 2014, we collected, we accepted a value of $279,000 in donation for in-school tutoring initiative for that Imagine 2020. And so, when I look at the data in our reading scores, and I look at the IR schools, and then when I talk with parents and look at the dollar per mount, schools are receiving. And then when you break that out to per student, we're only paying $16.97 at some schools, $11.78 at others, and some schools, it's $29.48 per pupil. But then, we're only tutoring 40 to 50 students at a school, when they may have 660 with a waitlist of about 100 more that need to be tutored. So, I'm just trying to understand the $700,000, the $239,000, and then the RFP for the millions that we are spending and looking at our needs with the reading, especially the reading portion of how well we did in the district.
I'll do my best to answer the question. The first part of that is that the donation from the DEF is an add-on.
It's an add-on.
It's an add-on, and that it will be for specific schools in which the donors have requested. So, then we have another $2.6 million paid out of special revenue funds for I-2020 schools, and then we have an additional just under $1 million of that. Now, part of that is going to be for a per-pupil allocation to the campuses, but could also have been additional amounts that all principals have the ability to move their budget as they see fit for whatever program they want in the general fund.
So, if I understand correctly, it's an add-on to the original RFP for in-school tutoring, not an offset?
It's an offset.
You said it's an add-on.
Well, it's an add-on to what we currently have in the budget.
So, add-on means additional money to tutor more kids?
Yes.
But an offset means we have allocated this amount, and we're gonna kinda put that, you know, I allocated $2.6 million, $700,000 of that is gonna be allocated to that to take away from the $2.
No.
This is added-on, $2.6 million plus the $700,000. So, that means that schools today, if they have additional students that need tutoring, that additional dollars will go to the schools to help tutor.
The $700,000, the donation, the $700,000 from the DEF will go to the schools as has been directed by the donors.
To the, yeah, to the Imagine 2020 schools.
Yes, right.
And what I'm requesting is, when you look at, when I look at District 9, I guess it seems to me that it should be either $25 per pupil. I were being equitable, it's kinda off. Because one school only receives $7.39 per student to tutor. I don't know how we can even that out with the dollars that we're gonna vote on additionally, but...
I believe that the actual allocation out to the campuses were even.
Right.
Now, how the principals go and allocate the money is probably dependent upon how the principal sees the need.
Well, when I received the allocation, what I did is, for example, I took Lincoln High School. They received $7,870 is what I received. And if you look at their enrollment, they have 536. So, for example, when you divide that into, you get the allocation. for example, when you divide that into, you get the allocation per pupil.
Well, you have to understand that the way that in the budgeting process, we allocate on a per basis to the campuses based on, you know, certain criteria. One of them would be for tutoring money. That goes to lump sum to the principals to allocate as they see fit.
Okay, I got this from our. So if I understand you correctly, this is additional dollars to help tutor kids in reading and math?
The donation goes to the I-2020 in-school tutoring?
Yeah, but it's additional dollars. So today, if principal have a wait list of forty students that need tutoring, and they're using whoever, Reading Partners, Reader-to-Laders, Beacon Hill, any of those tutoring companies, they can add additional dollars.
The seven-hundred and seventy, I can provide to you, and actually, I think it might be in the backup in your book, how the DEF has...
Yeah, I saw that. I'm just, I didn't clarify if this was additional dollars, because I have...
Additional dollars, yes.
And when I look at the data in reading, then you break that out per the schools, then you look at the ELC, and you look at our twelfth graders that have not passed at least one ELC, you need, they need tutoring. We need help. And so principals are requesting additional monies to be able to help to bring in retired teachers, whoever, to help with this in-school tutoring during the day. So I just want a clarification. It's not an offset. It's additional dollars on the RFP with all these companies.
Yes, we will bring to you in October.
Principals in I-20, you can expect more money to be able to tutor the students that you have on the wait list. We could, I just wanna make sure that this is getting...
You should see in the budget amendment, in October, an additional in the revenue of seven-hundred thousand from the DEF, and then that will then be put into
The I-20.
Function eleven
Okay.
For additional to the expenditure side. So it'll offset, there'll be zero, and there'll be no effect to the budget.
Offset, you said offset.
What I'm saying is that there'll be an add on the revenue side, an expenditure, and when you net them, it's zero. So there's no effect on the budget, but it's additional money to...
In-school tutoring. I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't see that, and I had a lot of requests on, from needing help with our students on the academic side. So I just wanted to make sure that this was additional dollars and not
Yes, ma'am.
Replacing dollars we've already committed.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, trustee Nuttall. Trustee Foreman. Okay, trustee Mitch K.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that page four of the board document has the list of schools and allocation of dollars to those schools.
Thank you, trustee Mitch K. Trustees, is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion. Trustees, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving to accept a donation from the Dallas Education Foundation for Imagine 2020 in-school tutoring, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, funding, gifts, and donations. Trustees, we're now on to item seven eight point thirty-three to approve an amendment to board action dated June twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, per board file number six-one-nine-five-four for City Year for Youth Development Services for District-Wide Use not to exceed one million six-hundred thousand over four years. Consent item number thirty-three pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nuttall. Do I have any, do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham and seconded by trustee Nuttall. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
We just did this contract in June, correct?
I'm sorry, I, oh, I, I'm so sorry. Yes, the contract was originally approved for a lower amount. Yes.
Okay. And it was approved for six-hundred thousand, correct?
I believe, it's in the document. I don't actually have it open right now.
Okay, you wanna get to it?
I'm sorry, I can't go that fast. Please, just ask your question. I might be able to do it off the top of my head.
I'd be able to find it. Okay. So we did it for three years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it was six-hundred thousand?
Yes.
And you're asking for an additional million for an additional one-year added to that. What's the difference between the six-hundred thousand and the million six?
The difference is that the original contract was set up on the basis that it would only, it would only have a couple of schools per year, and the way that City Year works is a different, they have a different business model. I believe you heard that at the briefing when the people from City Year were here. What they, the way they run the program is that there are ten volunteers per school, and they add, they add a school every year, and they go up to five, you know, fifty volunteers over the three, four-year period. So it was just a, the reason we're really changing the model of the program from what the original approval looks like. That's the difference.
What did they bid on originally?
They bid on providing services to schools that would help students, you know, do well, tutoring, extra programs, et cetera, et cetera.
I guess what I...
Sherry West is here, and she knows a lot more about the program, so I might ask her to come to, she's coming to the table right now, I'm sure.
Okay.
So the, so the, go ahead, Sherry, the bid.
Okay. The bid originally was to provide services to campuses with regard to working with students in math and reading and doing additional mentoring and coaching for students, and working with teachers in classrooms. They'll go into classrooms and provide small group tutoring during instruction.
What changed?
It's mine, I wasn't originally a part of the program. The individuals that were no longer within District. And it's my understanding that when they first brought the program forward, they brought forward to do two-hundred thousand for three years.
Per year.
And so then, when we came back to the table with City Year and found out that was not the way their program runs, that if we wanted to continue with the program, we needed to look back at what their requirements were and how they operated, and that's when we came back with what we needed to do to enact the program properly.
So you do understand my concerns?
Yes.
Less than three months ago, we entered into a contract
Correct.
For a three-year period for six-hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
You're coming back to me today asking me to add an additional one million dollars to add-on one more year?
Yes, ma'am.
That's troublesome. I understand it adds some additional programs, but there were specs with your bid. There should have been. If there weren't, then that's a problem, too.
The specs with the bid, as I understand it, did not include the specifics of exactly how the program would work. It was more generic, as Ms. West said, for the reading, the extra support services. But the model itself was a part of the proposal.
You know, and that sounds good, but you don't do a contract without some idea of what's in the contract. You just, you just don't do that. And I am concerned that not only did you come back asking for another million, that's twice, over twice, what the original contract was. That's not good business.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm concerned about that.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Nuttall. Trustees, is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion? Yes, sir. Dr. Blackburn.
Just briefly tell me, what kind of service are they gonna provide?
Okay, what they provide is instructional planning. They provide positive culture strategies for the school. They do intervention strategies in math and literacy, coaching and mentoring. They'll even do engaging parents. They'll do workshops with parents in a variety of topics, relationship building, teamwork and collaboration, problem solving. They'll work with students on public speaking and managing difficult conversations. In addition to the pieces that I talked about earlier, where they, they'll do small group instruction in classrooms, where they'll do pull-outs. So they, they work with kids, they work with parents, and they do mentoring, coaching, and tutoring, basically.
Mentor and coach students or parents, or both?
Students. They'll do sessions with parents. They'll do guidance sessions with parents, but they work all day long. They're in school all day long, and they work with students from eight to five, or eight to four, however long the students are there.
And approximately how many people will be on a campus providing these services?
It's ten per school. And what they, what they will do this year, they'll do two schools, second semester, ten on each campus. Then next year, they'll add the additional three schools. So we'll have five schools for the next three years, and each school will have ten adults in the school all day long for the entire school year.
Two schools this year?
Second semester.
And a total of five schools next year?
Starting next year will be five schools, correct?
Is this a pilot, or is this something that we plan to just, I'm hearing five schools out of two-hundred and twenty-five or two-hundred and thirty?
Right. It's, it's five schools for four years, and it's my understanding that it's just for the four years, then they select another city. So this year was, Dallas was selected.
Okay, we were selected.
We were given the opportunity once. They, they came in and bid on our RFP that we had out there, and so Dallas was a city that they were interested in coming in and doing work around what we were looking for, and so Dallas was one of the sites that they were interested in doing. So if we had an RFP in the future, I can't guarantee that they would, that they would vote on it, because it would be determined where they would be that year.
So in about three years, they might not be interested in working with us? Is that what I'm hearing?
We would have to talk to them at the end of that and see. I can't say that it would be a reoccurring thing at this point.
But they're only gonna work with five schools?
Five, five schools.
For one-point-six million dollars. Ten students, ten workers per campus.
Correct.
These are elementary, middle school, or high school campuses?
We have not determined what the schools are yet. We're gonna be working with the assistant superintendents if this is approved to determine the schools.
So how are we addressing this need right now before this one-point-six-million-dollar deal?
Well, in, oh, go ahead. No. In our schools, we, we do have, you know, teacher assistants that help with some of these kinds of things. We have counselors. We have other kinds of, you know, teachers stay after school and do tutoring. There are parent specialists that can help with, with things. So schools do have some resources. This will just add resources to the five schools that we choose to, that we, that we use the program in.
Okay. Hmm. In the original RFP, we had the specs, just like trustee Foreman was talking about, and we told the vendors what we wanted, and we made a choice. We made a selection based upon them providing a response to our request for a proposal. And this company responded to our proposal as we needed it at that time?
That's, yes. Kimmy Tate could talk about the, brought the procurement process. I was not involved in that, but there were several vendors that responded, and they scored high.
Yeah. I guess my concern is, after they get the contract, after they get selected, after the board approves it, then the rules change. That's my bigger concern.
I understand, and that's, I can certainly understand that. I'm, I can't really answer why we started with the other contract. As Sherry said, you know, we were not the ones that negotiated that, and I do apologize for that, but at this point in time, what City Year's program looks like is the, is the contract you have before you.
Yeah. Well, I still, my concern is that they responded to our bid, our proposal, our RFP, and they were selected, and then now they have asked for us to change, or did we ask them to change?
What I was told is that after the board approved that original earlier contract, they, they told us that they had not realized that the board approved the contract as it was written by our staff at the time, and once they realized that, they called us and said, you know, this is not how we work. This is not the program that we offer. And that's when we came back to say, we need, if we're going to do this, if we're going to do it with City Year, we need to use the program, their program model. And so the contract you have in front of you is their program model.
So someone on one of the sides did not disclose to the other what the arrangements were going to be. That's what it sounds like that you're saying.
The way I understand it is that there might have been a misunderstanding on the part of our staff as to what the program model was. That's my understanding.
But we do understand that they, they chose to provide a proposal to our RFP. They chose that.
They did.
So still, again, I'm concerned that, that, that some kind of way, we're deciding that there's a new model that we wanna work under. And, and no offense, but it sounds like a lot of people does, a lot of people don't really know what's going on.
Understood. Ms. Tate can help us, maybe.
They did respond with their program that Dr. Smithko has right now. It's currently before you. However, at the time that it was looked at, the evaluation committee and the sponsoring, shall we say, group that would have brought it to you earlier, only determined at that time that they could afford, if you will, three, three years of this service, and on a limited, smaller scale. And so that's when, and the proposal was what you have in front of you. Again, that committee decided that they could only, only work within that a smaller scale than what they had. So when it was approved, we, it was recommended to take a smaller scale. Now, City Year at that time hadn't agreed to that, so as you start work, we, because we don't have a contract with them currently. So as we start working with the contract, that's when they said, we can't do this small program. This is our, what we proposed was our larger program, and this is what we can do. And that's how, that's why it's coming back.
So you're saying the committee changed the rules during the evaluation process?
No, they didn't change the rules. They looked at the proposal, because the proposal, the RFP didn't go out and say, we want a four-year program, or a six-year program, or a two-year program. They said, what can you offer us in these areas? We'll assist. So when they turned in their proposal, City Year, this is their proposal that they turned in as a part of, a four-year program, this is what we do. The committee, the recommending committee, wanted that program, but they could only afford three years. Couldn't afford four years, and they only wanted a smaller number of, shall we say, of the staff members at those schools.
And now, all of a sudden, we can't afford it?
Well, that's all they had allocated for that. And so for that program was the six-hundred thousand, I do believe. So then, as you start, we start negotiating with and talking with City Year, that's when City Year said, this is, this isn't our program. This is not what we do. We do a four-year program. This is what we submitted. This is how it works. And so that's why we're coming back and say, we really wanna use this program, and this is how it works. When it was submitted earlier, was, that's what the, what the committee wanted. It's just not the program that City Year normally offers. In other words, they wouldn't scale it down to what the committee wanted.
I think, I think, I think so. Another point is in the evaluation, as I understand the evaluation process, he who has the best price sets the bar. And the group that came in second place got the maximum ten points for the best price.
The pricing, yes.
And this, this company was second or third as far as pricing. So I'm wondering...
But then they scored higher on the, on the actual, on the other pieces.
So the scoring changed, or would the scoring change, because we are now asking for one-point-six million dollars instead of point-six?
As far as the scoring, I don't, I would have to actually do a double check on that.
City Year did not have the highest score for, for, for price.
Well, what we looked at, and I actually do have this data, is the cost per student, if it was going to be done over three years, and the amount of students, and then if we extend it to four years, plus... extend it to four years, plus an expansion of probably more students at those schools or more, I think they're, are they called facilitators or...
AmeriCorps members.
AmeriCorps members. When you expand and add more of the AmeriCorps members, that's what it costs more. So on their program that they've submitted, that's before you now, the cost is the same per student as it would be if it was for three years with a lesser amount of students or a lesser amount of AmeriCorps members.
So each member is going to work with how many students?
Let me check, see if I have that.
Since we're going to break down to cost per student and we don't know which schools they're going to work with.
We did commit that they will work with outside of the Imagine 2020.
Hold on one second, Trustee Nudal. It's okay. Dr. Blackburn, do you mind if we stop at the moment with the ten minutes and we'll come right back around to see if there's any more discussion from any other trustees?
Yeah, unless you already have it.
Yes. I have for, the first academic year, it looks as though City Core would supply twenty, or City Year would supply twenty AmeriCorps members. And then in the following three years, they would have fifty AmeriCorps members. So those, and if you take that into the all four years, the consideration, it actually equaled out to thirty-five dollars per student.
I never heard how many students total.
Right. Well, I think that was based on the schools and it's based on two hundred and fifty students. It's seven hours per student. It's an average of two hundred and fifty students is what they were looking at.
Per member?
Per core member. This is based on per core member.
Trustee Nudal?
I support this. I was, as I said, AmeriCorps member. So I understand the work that they do and actually had an opportunity to work with AmeriCorps last year. However, we are not going into the, we're looking at our other highest need schools as the President Grove, Comstock, Neighborhood, Samuel Feeder Pattern.
We're looking, you're right. We're looking at schools that are currently not getting additional support through the I-2020. That's correct. We haven't made decisions. We're in the process of evaluating all that.
I'm requesting that we support our other high need schools that are in the...
That's right.
The Samuel Feeder Pattern, the Comstock, the Blair, the Bernalson, the Henry Gonzalez, the John Ireland own-up on that side, the Urban Park, if we can support schools without all of the additional resources that Southern Sector is receiving.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Trustee Nudal. Trustees, any other comments? Okay, Trustee Foreman, we're going to go for the second round.
Okay. And I'll try to do this quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
My schools are in the Southern Sector also. They're not in South Dallas. They're not I-2020. And I have some IR schools. And while I am supportive of helping other schools and supportive of AmeriCorps, I am supportive of a clean and clear procurement process. This can't be. Because what has happened is you had other vendors bidding at the time. And anytime you come back immediately, immediately after a procurement, that's a problem. Because you have a vendor that received the award, but in a matter of a couple of months, won additional dollars. While I understand RFPs, what I do understand is that sometimes they're real troublesome. And so we need to start looking at more RFQs. Because there's no way that anyone can justify to me the difference between six hundred thousand dollars and a million six in just a matter of a few months and adding one additional year. And so I think we need to take a very clear look at the way we procure. Because those vendors that you discounted, they don't have the same opportunity.
Thank you, Trustee Foreman. Dr. Blackburn, did you want to continue? All right, trustees, are there any more discussions? Okay, trustees, please cash your votes.
The motion passes, six voting yes and two voting no.
Thank you, trustees. We are now on to General Item 7A point thirty-four, to ratify payment for Ruth Murdoch not to exceed nineteen thousand. General operating funds consent item number thirty-four, pulled by trustees Joyce Foreman and Bernadette Nudal. Do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Foreman?
I try to be a consistent and clear person. I have often spoke about ratifications and this is another ratification. And so I will be voting no on this ratification.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustees, any more discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Trustees, please cash your votes.
The motion passes, six voting yes and two voting no.
Trustees, you have just adopted the motion thereby approving to ratify payment for Ruth Murdoch not to exceed nineteen thousand. General operating funds, we're now on to item seven eight point thirty-eight, to approve a waiver of board policy CH Local as it relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement regarding board action dated May twenty-second, twenty fourteen, Board Document six one eight nine six, which increased the contract with Telwest Network Services Corporation for Internet Access Services. No additional funding required. Consent item number thirty-eight, pulled by trustees Bernadette Nudal and Joyce Foreman. Do I have a motion? Moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Nudal?
Yes. Can you clarify this? What are we doing here to waive the policy? Why?
Okay, this is a waiver of policy CH Local. And that is a policy that requires, that does not allow us to go more than twenty-five percent over a procurement. And so we're increasing this procurement by more than twenty-five percent. And we had brought this to the board in May and was approved at the time. We were not aware of this.
But I guess what I'm not understanding is that because legal law changed, how are we within the legal law? A policy states that, but there's a law now that went into effect that you can't go over the twenty-five percent rule. So how are we within that?
Yes, ma'am. That law only applies for contracts with an initial value of more than one million dollars. This one started out at half a million.
But, so this one, the law wouldn't apply to this contract?
Correct.
Can Jack clarify that? The law would not apply to this contract? Okay, can he? Just because I'm trying to understand that twenty-five percent law and we're waiving policy that says we can with the twenty-five percent, but then there's a law that went into effect. So would the law not apply to this contract?
I'll defer to the lawyers.
Yes, excellent question. And it does not, because this bid was opened on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, and the law went into effect on September the first of two thousand and eleven. So this precedes the law. So then it only means that there's the policy. CH Local also does the same thing. You can waive CH Local if you choose to.
So anything going forth past January, when the law went into effect, this went into, this passed before the law got passed?
Yes. The original contract was adopted by this board on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. So that precedes the date that the law went into effect, which is September one, two thousand and eleven.
Because is this contract part of the September twenty-second, two thousand and eleven contract?
Are you talking about, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The original contract was for five hundred dollars over three years.
It was five hundred thousand, yes.
Yeah, five hundred thousand over three years. And then May twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, it was additional dollars for that.
It was increased on May twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. But while it didn't violate the state law, it did violate your local policy, CH Local.
Because again, the state law went into effect.
Was not yet in effect when this originally went out for bids and that's the test is when the law applies.
So you have to follow the law when the original bid happened?
When, yes, yes. That's how the law is governed. So anything that goes out for bids after September one, two thousand and eleven, comes under the law. Anything before that precedes the law, prior law applies to those contracts. So that means that while the state law doesn't apply to this contract, your local policy still does.
I follow that. I guess because I'm looking at a September twenty-second, twenty-eleven, the law went into effect September first, twenty-eleven.
September one, two thousand and eleven, yes.
Yeah. And the contract is dated. So you're saying when the bid went out before September one, twenty-eleven, you didn't have to follow, we had to follow the policy?
Yes. The rule is when the bids went out.
But still, prior to September one, twenty-eleven, we still had the twenty-five, well, no, that went into effect after September one, twenty-eleven.
Yes.
So since this contract was dated September twenty-second, the law is not applied to it.
Correct.
But now we're just asking for a waiver to policy, but the law is in effect?
The law is in effect, but doesn't affect, it doesn't impact this contract because the original contract was let before the law went into effect.
But did we not do another contract on May the twenty-second, twenty fourteen?
Yes, you did. You did. And you increased the amount of the same contract is what you did on that date.
But wouldn't that have...
But it was not a new contract and it was not a new bid.
But wouldn't that have not applied to the September the first, twenty-eleven contract?
No, because you're still using the same RFP and the same contract that you originally went out for. It's the same contract. You're just increasing the amount of money of that contract.
So the twenty-five percent, that wasn't twenty-five percent. Because you know, I don't know how to do math, so.
So again, while the law doesn't apply, your local policy, which says the same thing, does apply.
The local policy applies on this, but the law...
And there's a violation of local policy. You have the authority to waive your local policy if you choose to.
That I understand. I'm just trying to find the law in approving this contract, the ratification for the law. Because the law is the twenty-five percent rule.
Yes.
So we...
Which does not impact this particular contract.
Because it was before September the first.
Yeah, September the first. It preceded it, yes.
But now we have to follow the law after any contract after September the first.
Anything that goes out for bids after September one.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Nudal. I'm sorry. Thank you, trustee Nudal. Trustee Foreman?
I guess my concern is, is that when the, on May the twenty-second, when we increase the value of the contract, we were violating policy. Correct?
Correct.
Did we know we were violating policy?
No, ma'am.
So how did we find out we violated policy?
Through discussions, legal review and further discussions jointly between legal, purchasing, CFO and technology, we discovered this policy.
Who would normally catch that?
Well, theoretically, all of us.
Who would normally catch it? That we were violating policy on the procurement side?
Well, probably legal or purchasing, I imagine.
My concern still remained that knowingly we violated policy. And so I'll be voting no.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Mitch K?
Yes, Ms. Luna. What are the E-rate implications of our vote tonight on this contract?
Hi. There is a potential loss of E-rate reimbursement of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars if your policy is not waived.
Just so that I understand, if we do not approve a waiver, we would potentially lose almost seven hundred thousand dollars of E-rate money?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mitch K. Trustees, is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion. Trustees, please cash your votes.
Okay. The vote passes, six voting yes and two voting no.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving a waiver of board policy CH Local as it relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement regarding board action dated May twenty-second, twenty fourteen, Board Document six one eight nine six, which increased the contract with Telwest Network Services Corporation for Internet Access Services. No additional funding required. Our next item is seven eight point thirty-nine, to ratify expenditures, approve and increase the contract for inside public school networks, public sector for network electronics and services for various departments, district-wide, and waive of board policy CH Local as it relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement not to exceed nineteen million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars, of which eight million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars is for ratification of past expenditures and ten million, nine hundred thousand additional general operating funds, bond funds, E-rate eligible. Consent item number thirty-nine, pulled by trustees Bernadette Nudal and Joyce Foreman. Do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Nudal and then trustee Foreman?
I guess this would be for the attorney. This original, we, a contract was June the two thousand and six, I mean, two thousand and six. And June twenty-eighth, twenty twelve, we came back to the board with no funding required. But then now in September, we're coming back to the board. So we were over our contract, the thirty million that was approved in June two thousand and six. When we came to the board on June the twenty-eighth and twenty twelve, we were over the amount that the board originally approved.
I think that's correct, yes.
We were over that amount. So if we do not approve this contract tonight, because we're asking to waive policy again, so it's within the twenty-five percent, correct?
Twenty-five percent under your policy, yes.
Under policy. So this is not under legal law since June twenty-twelve is when we bought it to the board with no funding required.
The original contract was two thousand and six.
So since this original contract was two thousand and six, the law went into effect September first of twenty-eleven.
Correct.
But we bought it to the board June twenty-eighth, twenty twelve. But because no funding, additional funding required, but we were over the contract on June twenty-eighth, twenty twelve.
Yes. Remember, the test is when you go out for bids, which was two thousand and six.
But we were over the contract on June twenty-eighth, twenty twelve, of the thirty million that we approved in two thousand and six. Am I correct, Mr. Saliday?
Correct.
So is there a reason why we didn't request additional funding then in June twenty-eighth, twenty twelve, when we were already over the contract from two thousand and six?
In June, so you're asking me in June two thousand and twelve, why we did not ask for an increase then?
We were over the amount because we're requesting a ratification for eight point nine million today. But in June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, we were over the thirty million that was originally approved by this board in two thousand and six. So it seems to me we would have requested additional funding in two thousand and twelve, when we bought it to the board to finish.
I understand. Yes, ma'am. If we were aware, we were not aware that the amount had been exceeded at that time.
And who's responsible for keeping up with when we go over our contracts?
Again, it's the people that own the contract and purchasing.
Responsible for going over. So then, Mr. Luna, we're bringing this back in two thousand and fourteen. So we didn't go out for bid in two thousand and twelve when we should have, because we were over the thirty million that was approved in two thousand and six. So shouldn't we went out for bid then in two thousand and twelve?
No, it wasn't required.
It wasn't required, even though we were over the thirty million dollar contract that we originally approved?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So now we're asking for the waive, I mean, the waive the policy, I'm correct. Number two, ratify the eight point nine million. And number three, extend it to ten more million.
Yes, ma'am.
Almost eleven million.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's over the twenty-five percent. So we don't have to go out for bid for this again, Mr. Luna?
No, it's not required on this.
And if we don't approve this, how much E-rate funding will happen? What's the ratification?
This is a large one, eighty-six million.
So we will lose eighty-six million if we do not...
Yes.
And so because we're not following policy and doing, so we are potential eighty-six million if we do not approve this tonight?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you, trustee Nettle. Trustee Foreman, and then trustee Mitch Kay?
While I, while I clearly understand the E-rate implications, what I don't clearly understand is that if you look at the board document, all of this is put back on the board to virtually say that we approve of what's happened. We have a ratification of 8.945,693 million dollars. A ratification of 8,945,693. How does that happen? Not only do we have the ratification, we have now a request for an additional $10,900,000, almost 11 million dollars. And we say we're spending the district's money wisely? How do I know that? When we haven't gone out for bids since 2006, Mr. Luna, do you think it's in the board's best interest to continue to extend bids this long?
When contracts are extended this long, a number of things begin to happen. A part of which is you've already seen laws change, create some complications regarding the application of a particular contract, especially if they have a lot of parts to them, as many of these do, and they run at different times, as many of them do. They become more complicated the longer they're out there. Also, when they sit this long, a lot of the original bids and the items that have been purchased become stale, out of date, no longer work. So, the short answer to your question for a lot of reasons is it's probably a better practice not to extend contracts this long and to go out for new bids.
Thank you. That's what I think, too. One other question. When does this contract end?
Kimmy, just, just please come, if you can answer, just answer really quickly for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, you know, Ms. Foreman, may I, you know, add one comment on, for your previous question to Mr. Luna? While we're looking up this answer, and that, that is, your question of how this happened, I, what I would like to do is put in context of the situation. The, this contract, when it was initially let back in 2006, was never intended for us to be buying equipment from, directly, and paid for directly from, from the district. It was meant to be a, what's called a spy contract, which meant the vendor would fund all the equipment. Unfortunately, because of the situation we're in, the, we ended up funding that off this contract. So, to put your, to put it in another way, it was, this contract was never intended to be used in the way it's being used. But because E-rate, the large dollar amounts, you must use the original contract. So, there's been, I would say, close to heroic efforts by, by the district staff and by this board to keep this contract alive so that we could build this network and, and get the federal money. So, so, we, we have done everything we could to replace this contract. Unfortunately, E-rate funding has started to evaporate, and we have not been able to get an E-rate approved contract to replace this one. So, our only alternative was to keep this one alive.
My question remains, when does the contract end?
It ends September the 30th, 2013, but it has three one-year renewal options, and if those are exercised, it runs through September the 30th, 2016.
Okay. And Mr. Luna, it's September the 30th, 2013, and three one-year renewals, when was that enacted? If you can't find it, you can get it to me, but I'm, the reason I'm asking that question is, this contract has had a long life, and it appears that this board continues to put additional dollars into this contract. And while E-rate is very important, we still have to be efficient with the taxpayers' dollars. And so, I'm just wondering, you know, when does this contract end?
Thank you.
It was renewed on June 28th, 2012.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Mitch Kay?
Yeah, it's, it seems to me that we have two distinct issues here. First one is, if we do not approve this waiver, we are, we stand to lose 86 million in E-rate funding. Is that correct, Mr. Luna?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the second, so that, there's no question in my mind that, how I'm going to vote if we, if I vote no, and if the board votes no, we lose 86 million dollars. That's not going to happen. The second distinct issue, though, is what are we doing to correct the processes and procedures that make it necessary for us to have to do a ratification when the ordinary and regular processes haven't been followed? So, what are the corrective actions that are being put in place by the administration?
There was a memo that I sent to the board dated September 10th, and I listed the processes that we're enacting to improve. First, we are to notify all vendors that they cannot start work without a complete purchase order. Second, we are reducing the number of categories that are eligible for check requests. Third, all check requests are now processed through procurement, so we can keep up with the amount of spend on contracts. Third, we have installed a new software system to help track contracts. Fifth, we are hiring contract manager personnel to assist divisions in maintaining contract compliance. Six, we have brought in pro bono consulting to identify, consultants to identify areas for improvements in better utilizing our current ERP software and new software. Seven, we are strengthening regulations, holding people accountable for violations of policy and procedures, including specified consequences. Eight, we're expanding and improving our systems, procedures, and documentation, and training. And third, we are reinforcing communications on procurement procedures and expectations.
I think your number three was number nine.
We, we're going to do work on some math, just as a whole group.
I think it's-
That's why I'm a psychologist.
All right. I just want to get some assurance that what we have in place is consistent with best practices. What are, what do other districts do to ensure that we don't have this need for a ratification, to make sure that the ordinary processes are followed, so that there is no need for ratification? Have you looked at, Jim, I think this is a question to you. Have you, have you looked at best practices in other districts?
Yes. One of the first things, I took over this seat a little over a year ago, and one of the first things we did was, the procurement people went out to Garland, who have an Oracle system. And what we found was that, in fact, there was a system out there, or a package out there, that would help us utilize and track contracts and expenditures. So, we came back, and we found that, in fact, we had the package, it just had never been installed. So, we installed that package. So, that is now, I think, helping now. One of the other things is that, and we have brought to you over the last few months, quite a number of ratifications, because we're in, we are inputting contracts, and we are finding these errors that have occurred, and we're bringing them to light, and we want to do the right thing, so that's why we bring them to you all. And I know this is kind of a hard period, as we lift up our standards in terms of procurement, but we do believe, and I do know, and I expect that you, and I know everybody's very impatient, but we will get it right, and this procurement will end up as one of the best in the, in the state.
Well, the, the rules and processes that we had in place that made it possible for this problem to occur, how, how long has that situation been in existence?
You know, that's hard for me to tell. I've only been, as I say, in this seat for a little over a year, but as far as I can tell, it looks like, you know, that culture and that process has been here for, for years. It probably preceded Mr. Soliday before he came. But we have, you know, what I think is one of the key things that we did is we moved what are called check requests out from under accounts payable, and we moved it so that it flows through procurement. So, they now know what's going through check requests, and check request was kind of one of the ways that you could wire around the purchase order system. And so, now, we have them together, and so, we know the total amount that's flowing out for a particular contract.
Okay. I, I think it's clear from this meeting, and particularly from the board briefing, that every member of this board really despises having to go through this ratification process. So, I encourage you to do what's necessary to get this cleaned up. At the same time, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense for, for us to be voting to cut off our nose to spite our face and walk away from 87 million of E-rate reimburse, reimbursements. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mitch Kay. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Nettle?
Trustee Mitch Kay, while I understand cutting off our nose for the 86 million, this is a bigger issue. There has to be consequences. And no, our children shouldn't have to suffer the consequences for our lack of accountability. So, my question is, we had two clean audits, correct?
Yes.
And we received 9.2 million dollars back in E-rate funding?
18.4.
18.4 million. So, E-rate gave us 18.4 million.
Correct.
So, in our audit, they, there's a list of things that, and Mr. Luna, you've been our attorney since 2011 on this E-rate, since 2011, and we had two clean audits. So, two clean audits on this part. Question is, I notice this contract ended the 20, June 28th, 2012, it ended on September 30th, 2013. This is our second time ratifying, because, am I correct, it ended on September 30th, 2013?
Well, I believe that it would have ended there, except that we brought back, it was brought back to the board and allowed one three-year extensions, which would take it out to 2016.
Did I, because I'm looking at the June 28th, 2012, and it said, "It is necessary to increase term and authorization through September 30th, 2013. Additional authorization for renewal option through September the 30th, 2015, in one-year increments." And so, now, I'm trying to understand, this contract is extended to 20, it ended 2013. You came to us in 2012 for 2013, and then it's supposed to go to 2015. But we're coming in 2014 for a ratification.
That's correct.
So, how did that, because it doesn't end, the second part of the contract doesn't end to 2015?
Well, we're, we're in 2014, so-
Yeah, but we're coming for a ratification, so we're over-
Well, we're ratifying that period of, that there was, we went over the-
30 million?
Yes, over the 30 million and before.
That was, that was in, according to my notes, that was in about May of 2012, when, when that 30 million was exceeded.
May of 2012, the 30 million. So, the total contract I'm trying to get is 30 million, 8 million over, plus 10 million.
Well, we're asking for an additional 10.9 million, which will allow us to access the E-ratable dollars.
So, we didn't get E-rated on this before? Part of that 18-point million was part of this contract?
I think Kimmy's shaking her head, yes.
So, we did receive E-rate money from this?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
So, now, we're trying to get, so the total contract is going to be valued at?
The total would be 86 million, but we've already received approximately 9 million of that.
But now, you're needing 30, we spent 30, we need 8 plus 10, so 8-
We need another 10.9 in order to access the other 75 E-rate, E-ratable dollars.
And if we don't do this again, we're waiving policy, requesting a ratification for 8.9, and asking for additional 10?
That's correct, ma'am.
And then, after that, we'll go out for bid for additional, another contract?
Well, that would be-
Well, we have three more years, so.
Right.
Thank you, trustee Nettle. Trustees, any more discussion? Here are no discussion. Trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes, six voting yes and two voting no.
Thank you, trustees. Our next, I'm sorry, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving to ratify expenditures, approve and increase the contract for Insight Public Sector for Network Electronics and Services for various departments district-wide, and waive of board policy CH Local as it relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement not to exceed $19,845,693, of which $8,945,693 is for ratification of past expenditures and $10,900,000 additional general operating funds, bond funds, and E-rate eligible. We're now on to item 78.40 to ratify and approve expenditures for Telwest Network Services Corporation for Telecommunication Carrier Services district-wide between July 1st, 2012 and June 30th, 2013, not to exceed $765,394.93 general operating funds. Consent item number 40, pulled by trustees Bernadette Nettle and Joyce Foreman. Trustees, do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Cowan. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Nettle, and then trustee Foreman.
Is this particular contract still under investigation?
So far as I know, it is, yes.
And so, is, do you, what is the ratification behind this contract? For E-rate?
Because it's not an E-rate contract, this is not-
This was pulled from E-rate, because this is a contract that we did not go out for bid for.
Oh, you went out for bids for it, but the bids were not posted correctly?
Posted. And so, this one, we spent 765 on a contract, on a non-contract.
Correct. It was withdrawn from E-rate.
So, we're having to spend out of general operating funds 765,000. We've already basically spent it, correct?
I, I believe the expenditure, though, came out of bond.
Out of bond?
Yes.
And this expenditure between-
Okay, it came out of jail.
This is expenditure between July 1st, 2012 and June 30th, 2013, that we went over on the original contract that was for 7.2, for over five years?
There was no contract.
Yeah, but then, we went back out for bid after that contract became, the auditors voided that contract. We went out for bid, and the board approved December 20th, 2012. Is this part of that same contract?
There was no contract.
I know, but we went back out for Telwest again. Didn't we go out for bid on Dec- Didn't we go out for bid on December the 20th? We approved a contract with Telwest for Internet Telecommunications Carrier Service.
Not on this, this one. There was no contract.
So, this one is just, where's the original contract for this one? That we're ratifying? It was a June 26th...
Kimmy, why don't you, why don't you just come down and be helpful?
Yeah, Kimmy, yeah.
Thank you.
Because I'm looking at a December the 20th that replaced, I thought, replaced the June 26th, this ratification, for seven point two million.
You're correct. The one that was brought to you in December of 2012 replaced this procurement that is up for ratification. That contract that is up for ratification right now was not truly a contract, it was invalid contract.
Yes, but...
It was only used for one year, and that procurement had to be thrown out the door because it was not a valid procurement.
But on December the 20th, 2012, the contract with seven point two million was replacing the contract that was voided.
Correct, but that contract that was brought to you, or the award in December of 2012, was not available to go into effect until July 1 of 2013, because it was an E-ratable contract.
So, if it's a voidable contract, we voided it, why are we ratifying seven hundred and sixty-five thousand on a contract that we did not have?
Because it was continued to be utilized, even though it wasn't a valid contract.
So, what is the December the 20th, 2012 contract, then?
That one replaced the contract that was being used at that time.
For seven point two million.
Correct, but it was a split between two different vendors on that procurement.
So, we had a voided contract, and we ended up spending for a year from June 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2013, seven hundred over a half a million on a contract that was said to be voided?
It was seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, seven hundred and sixty-five. It says sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay.
So, it was a voided contract. Did we not know the contract was voided?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Because the auditor said in the audit report to void the contract, correct?
They said it was invalid, yes, ma'am.
And we still wrote dollars against what the auditors, the law, said to us on the procurement side?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, trustee Nettle. Trustee Foreman, and then trustee Mitch K.
I'll try to make this painless and be brief. How do we pay seven hundred and whatever thousand dollars it was to a vendor without a contract?
That was one of the things that we corrected. It was paid through check requisitions, not going through the purchase order system. So, there was a divide, a split, and that is why I moved check requisitions so that they flow through procurement, so that we can avoid, you know, not being aware of check requests that is split off from purchase orders.
Just real quick, Jim, and thank you for your thoughts about doing some things differently, because it's extremely important, and I, as one board member, appreciate that.
Thank you.
But, when someone requests a check request, they don't have to have the contract? Do they just do invoices? It's just an invoice, and then somebody just takes that invoice and pays?
Correct.
Are there vendor numbers on it, or...
It wasn't tied. That's the problem, is the check requests weren't tied to a PO, and so...
So, they couldn't check if it was a valid invoice or not, they just paid?
Right.
Bad. Bad, bad, bad. Thank you.
Well, we fixed it.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Mitch K.
You said that this contract was avoidable because of a failure to advertise?
Correct.
And when should that advertising, that advertising take in place? What date, time?
The procurement for this specific contract was actually in November of 2011.
And that's when the advertising should have occurred?
Should have occurred, yes.
Okay.
It wasn't discovered until, I believe, the summer of 2012, during our financial audit.
Okay. And in terms of, obviously, there's a breakdown in the process, and you have put in place some measures to correct this process so that it doesn't happen again. But in terms of whether or not, have we received the services and value under, even though the contract was avoidable, did we, did we actually get anything?
Yes.
Okay, so, have we already paid? Okay, so, we've gotten the services, and we've already paid?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mitch K. Trustees, any other discussion? Okay, trustee Foreman.
Just one quick second round. Who verified we got the services?
IT.
IT?
Correct.
So, IT is the one who took the invoices for check request?
Correct.
So, there's nobody else that's verified, not through purchase orders or anything else that we received a service, correct? Talk to me, Kimmy.
The services were for internet access, and so, I do believe, no, let me look, just to make absolutely sure if this was internet access, or that, is this a tele...
Telecommunications.
This is a telephone service. This is our services for the elevators and those nine-one-one services and phone lines, pots lines, things like that? Is that correct? No.
These are telecommunications trunk lines that connect our telephone switches to the public switch network, which eventually do go through, eventually do provide the telephone access for parents to the campuses.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustees, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion. Trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes five voting yes and two voting no.
Trustees, you've just now adopted the motion thereby approving to ratify and approve expenditures for Telwest Network Services Corporation for Telecommunication Carrier Services district-wide between July 1st, 2012 and June 30th, 2013, not to exceed seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, three hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents general operating funds. Trustees, we're now on to our final item, seven eight point four one, to ratify expenditures in the amount of three million five hundred ninety-four thousand five, three million five hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents on the contract for AT&amp;T Global Services for district-wide telecommunication carrier services and waive board policy CH Locals that relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement regarding the twenty-one million increase approved by Board File 5989, 59890. General operating funds, bond funds, E-rate eligible. Consent item number forty-one pulled by trustees, Bernard Nettle and Joyce Foreman. Do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? I will second. Trustees, do we have any discussions? Trustee Nettle.
I have this for Mr. Luna. Mr. Luna, this, oh, I'll wait till you come up. The twenty, this contract was originally in 2006, correct?
Two thousand and six, yes.
And then, we went back out for bid again in 2011, well, we extended the master service agreement in 2011 for AT&amp;T.
There were extensions, yes.
For seven million. And then, we came back again in for, in 2011, for thirty-five million over five years for various funds. E-rate eligible.
I'm sorry, that's not sounding right. These are two contracts here.
Okay, I'm looking at...
One was a twenty million, and then the other one was a twenty-one million.
Okay, so, it's two contracts combined?
Yes, one behind the other.
One behind?
Yes.
So, the twenty million, well, it was SBC Global went to AT&amp;T, was 2006?
Yes.
Then, when we came back in 2011, we asked for additional twenty-one million. Correct?
Yes.
But we were already over in 2011, were we already over that twenty million contract?
You were.
And so, then, we asked for additional twenty-one million?
Yes.
And then, now, in 2013, we extended that contract for another four million, for over one year with two one-year renewable. Is that the same contract from the twenty, twenty-one million to four million in 2013?
No, the one in front of you right now is simply for those two things, to, for the, both the twenty million and the twenty-one million.
But we didn't do an extension on neither one of those contracts in 2013?
Um...
It says approve an extension of contract with AT&amp;T Global Service on December the 19th, 2013, and it's from the 2006 contract.
Well, I'd have to look. I don't have that right in front of me.
So, now, today, we're requesting to ratify the three point five million and to waive board policy, but this is only regarding the twenty-one million?
The ratification implicates a twenty million dollar contract, because that was overspent.
From 2006?
Yes.
Twenty million. But then, we came back to the board for twenty-one million, and then in 20...
An extension, yes.
Extension. Then, we came back in 2013 for an extension on that same contract for four million.
Well, that I'm not sure about. You've got a lot of AT&amp;T contracts.
Yeah. I was trying to figure them out. So, now, we want to ratify three point five million. What is the E-rate potential of money on this?
There's potential loss of five million two hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Five million, five point two million?
Yes, yes.
How much do we have to pay back now? How much E-rate money have we received on this contract?
We have to, we will have to reimburse the FCC four hundred and twenty-three thousand, approximately, and we have requested to withdraw application for four point three million.
For four point three million, we request to withdraw that. Is this particular contract under investigation as well?
No.
This one's not under investigation?
No.
Mr. Luna, is this one not under?
No.
It's not under investigation? So, a potential, we withdrew four point three million that we're not submitting. We have to pay back four hundred and twenty-one thousand?
Correct.
And if we don't approve this contract, it's a five point two million. If we don't approve it tonight?
Potential loss of five point two million, yes.
So, this is impacting the twenty-five percent law?
Under the policies, yes.
Under the policy. So, because the contract was original in 26, you don't have to follow the September 1st law?
2011 rule, that's correct.
You don't have to follow the 2011 rule?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Nettle. Trustee Foreman.
I'm a little confused. We are withdrawing four hundred and twenty-three thousand?
No. We've received money from the FCC based on one of the contracts with AT&amp;T, and we have to return four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to the FCC through USAC. Then, we have, we had made application for additional four point three million dollars, and we have, because the contract ended, we have requested, we have withdrawn that request.
Okay, so, we've...
Can I, can I correct?
Help me out.
Yeah, the one you're talking about, about refunding money, is the AT&amp;T cabling contract, which was attachment number seven. This one on, in the agenda, item number forty-one is a different one.
Okay, so, Mr. Luna, help me out. What have we done on this one?
On this one, we had two contracts originally, a twenty million dollar contract, which was overspent, and then, a twenty-one million dollar one right behind it, which did not get a policy waiver when it was approved. And so, both your motions...
And it was above the twenty-five percent?
Yes, so, your motions here go back in, number one, ratifying and approve the overspending of the first one, and waive the policy on the second one.
Was this, were check requests also asked for, to pay this?
Yes, I believe so.
And, so, procurement was not aware?
Correct.
That this was taking place?
Correct.
So, the total amount of this contract is twenty million?
The original contract, twenty million.
Okay, and the addendums or add-ons or...
Twenty-one million.
Okay, so, the total amount of the contract is...
Forty-one million.
That's what I was trying to get to. And you're asking us to waive the policy, and this is another contract that was done in 2006, correct?
Again, in 2006, yes, ma'am.
Again, in 2006. So, we don't know if we're getting our best value or not. And one thing I, you know, I fail to ask on all of these contracts, what's the minority business participation?
I would have to research that.
Well, I'm looking, and it says no subcontracting opportunity. So, I would assume that's reference to MWBE, correct?
Yes.
So, I would assume it's a zero.
Again, I'd have to research it.
Okay, well, the document says zero.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that the document is correct. And I would assume that's the trend on most of these contracts, which is problematic for me, particularly when a contract goes back to 2006. So, again, I will be voting no.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustees, is there any more discussion?
I have one more question.
Okay. Trustee Nettle.
Can you explain?
Trustee Nettle, one second. Did you have something that you want to say, trustee Mitch K?
Well, I just...
And then, we'll come back around for the second round. Trustee Nettle. Trustee Mitch K.
I just wanted to clarify that Mr. Luna's advice to us is that if we do not approve this, this ratification, the district will lose in excess of five million dollars in E-rate funding? There's a question mark at the end of that.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, and the process that led up to us needing to do a ratification, the failure to follow the ordinary policy rules, those are the same things that occurred in the other contracts that we just discussed?
Correct.
Okay, and you have those corrections that will prevent this from happening again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mitch K. Trustee Nettle.
I'm just curious, how do check requests work? You manager request a check, and who signs off on it? Is it the chiefs that request the check? Because I looked at when all of these check requests, because I requested all check requests, and when they started in monthly. So, is it the manager that signs off on the check request?
Well, there are a number of signatures. Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly how many signatures, but it is, would be at certain levels of expenditures, so chiefs right now have up to, I believe, a hundred thousand now, if the invoices came in, which I would assume that the invoices came in at a level that was assigned by the, you know, the manager or the supervisor to the manager.
So, the checks and balances. So, when I looked at the dates of the range of the check requests, so, do we have those checks and balances in place that you said you did? But, so now, if I understand you correctly, to correct these problems... But, so now, if I understand you correctly, to correct these problems, check requests, you know, I understand check requests for magazines and for conferences, we request checks for that. But check requests for vendors, no longer, they will go through procurement, must have a valid contract, PO, and it's the third thing.
PO, PO is the, is the key here. So all of, we, when I started, there was, I think, 32 items that could go through check requests. We have that list down to 15 right now. When you pay a bill, you have to have what's called three-way matches, which you've got to have a purchase order, so go through check requests. Then you have to have an invoice, and then you have to have a receiving, or essentially somebody signing off saying that we've received the items or the service. And that's called a three-way match, and then we pay off the three-way match.
So to ensure that we're not in this place three months, we, our checks and balances, our 32 major systems, because I looked at that, that was one of the things that we said we're going, so all of that is fixed. The checks and balances are in place.
I think in the 32 systems, it was that on the finance side that we were going to put in a database for contracts, and that is essentially why we're here, because we put in that database. We are loading the database, and as we load that, we are finding issues that need to be corrected procedurally, and so we're doing that.
So we no longer, chiefs will no longer be allowed to write check requests, and we're at this place again?
Well, the chiefs certainly would have, under the 15 items that are permissible, they would be able to request check requests. Up to the limit, I think chiefs now limit is like 100,000. Anything over 100,000 comes to me for my signature.
Since this prob, since we've been in this problem, you changed that to 100,000?
Yes.
Thank you trustee Nuttall. Trustees, any more discussion? Hearing none, trustees, please cast your votes.
The motion passes, six voting yes and two voting no.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion thereby approving to ratify expenditures in the amount of $3,594,539.99 on the contract for AT&amp;T Global Services for District-Wide Telecommunication Carrier Services and Wayboard Policy CH Locals that relates to submitting a separate competitive procurement regarding the $21 million increase approved by Board File 59890. General operating funds, bond funds, and E-Rate eligible. Trustees, we are now on to closing remarks, just very quickly, two things. The first thing is, you've heard all administration and trustees, conversations of systemic deficiencies that I believe that we, as an administration and as a board, need to continue to tackle. I applaud the administration for bringing these things forward, for having these very difficult conversations, and I also applaud our trustees for asking the tough questions that I think are going to help us build a more effective system as a whole. So we're looking forward to the work ahead, to the fixes, and we will continue to be here to support you, despite the tone or anything else. We're here to support you. So thank you all. The second thing and final thing I'll say is I just want to ensure that all trustees are aware that we will be launching the Systemic Equity Ad Hoc Committee. It'll be chaired by trustee Nuttall. I'm very excited about the fact that she's going to be leading this group, and she's done a tremendous amount of work in identifying community members to also help along the way. The scope of the ad hoc committee is going to be charged with conducting an assessment of district decision-making as it relates to systemic equity. The findings of the Equity Impact Assessment will lead to a discussion by the board at large regarding the creation, potential creation of a policy aimed at eliminating systemic racial and socioeconomic disparities and ensuring systemic equity across the district. This is very hard work, very difficult work, but I think work that is worthy of this board and this city at this time. So thank you trustee Nuttall for taking on this big responsibility. I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure the board is looking forward to the discussion as we get to the point where we can have that discussion. Thank you all. The time now, and this concludes our, yes? Mr. Rangel?
Yes.
My man. A little late, but that's, we moved everything up to the front, so you're here at the right time. Why don't you go ahead and step up to the mic, sir?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Actually, I have a nail in my tire, that's why I was late. But I really appreciate it. Good evening, President Solis, school board members, and superintendent Miles. My name is George Rangel, 334 Center Street, Dallas, Texas, 75208. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the H-1B teachers. Early this year, H-1B teachers reported numerous concerns and a lot of frustration about the recruitment and selection coordinator office. They made their concerns known by coming in here, making presentations, outlining the problems that they were having. And on April 25th, the district sent out a letter out to all the H-1B teachers outlining the proposed changes that they were going to be implementing. I'm here tonight as a messenger, letting you know that all the teachers send their deep appreciation for everything that y'all have done. The morale of these teachers has improved. You can see the change in them when they're talking. They're very appreciative, and they feel a sense of worth now, and, and they feel appreciated, coming in here from another country and helping the students out. In the last meeting that we had, there were very few concerns and a lot of kudos for everything, the change, all the changes that the district is, is making. You know, we had, there's still some problems, but for the most part, you know, everything is, is, is on target. The, the memo that went out on April of last, of this year, everything is being done, and we truly appreciate it, and, and we thank you for that. It's not often that we see these changes, but we want to make sure that it's on the record, that we appreciate the action that you've taken to support the educators. We applaud, we applaud you for listening and moving forward and addressing the concerns in a timely fashion. I know that you don't hear this enough, but thank you, thank you, thank you. This certainly deserves to be mentioned over and over. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ron.
Say it one more time.
So trustee Cowan, thank you very much for pointing that out, and, and what a, what a perfect way to end tonight's meeting. A systemic deficiency, communication between your employees, our employees, and our administration, tough changes that had to be made, and at the end of the day, a good result. This is the beauty, ladies and gentlemen, of Dallas ISD, and we're going to continue to work to make sure things like that happen. Our agenda now is closed for the evening. I want to thank everybody for coming. The time now is 8:44 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.